Public hearing in order. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the lease, lease, not leech, lease purchase information.
Yes, we have some representatives from LJ Hart and Company. Dr. Jeff Lindsay, Mrs. Courtney Wegman, and Neil, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Dane, sorry. What's your last name? Keller. And I think you're gonna stand up and...
Yeah, forward, thanks. All right. Oh, there is a recorder here. How about that? Thanks. So, the purpose of doing thi- this hearing prior to actual approval of the lease purchase agreement, one is to give the public the opportunity to ask any questions on the financing because unlike the general obligation bonds that you've done in the past, specifically, you know, two years ago, you went to the voters in order to have authorization to issue that debt. In this case, you do not have to. It's board action only, so it gives them the opportunity to ask any questions, voice any opinions regarding the financing itself. The other thing that's a little different with the general obligation bonds compared to the lease purchase is the overall legal structure. So, with the general obligation bonds, it's the full faith and credit of the district. So, you have to levy enough in order to make the payments. Every year, so you're basically, you are subjecting future boards to have to make those payments to set the levy in place. With the lease financing, it's subject to annual appropriation, so every year when you set your budget, you're putting those principal and interest payments within your budget. It's also coming out of Fund Four, your capital projects levy, and that, you know, the funds that are in there, whether it's classroom trust funds, your merchants and manufacturing surtax, some of the state assessed revenue from Fund Four that will be making the payments on the lease financing, as opposed to with your bonds, it's your debt service fund levy, you know, generated off of your assessed valuation. There are two main legal documents that are different with the lease financing as opposed to with the general obligation bonds. One is your base lease, and in this case, also the lease purchase. So, this financing, I will say, is a little different than any of the other lease financings I've done in the past, mainly because this is a private placement with one particular bank. So, in preparation for doing this type of a financing, typically, when we have a financing amount that's going above a million dollars, that's really the threshold for needing to pursue an underlying rating for the district. So, going with S and P, having a reading conference call, obviously, that's an additional cost. So, my goal was to try and keep the cost of issuance as low as possible. So, in order to do that, I actually reached out to the bank that I'll be talking about and wanted to gauge their interest on financing this particular project without having a rating because it was going to be over a million dollars. They were interested in doing that, and so we came to an agreement on an interest rate and some of the terms with which I'll talk about in order to do it as a private placement. So, the biggest benefit with being a private placement as opposed to doing a lease finance, a lease capital facilities lease, lease certificates of participation, one, we avoided the rating fee; two, our fees were able to be basically cut in half, and then some of the other closing costs were also eliminated, taking the total cost of issuance from what it would have been on a regular lease financing around forty-five thousand dollars to no more than twenty thousand dollars. So, that's a big benefit, and we were able to move quickly as opposed to having probably another three week time period with that rating process. So, back to those two documents, base lease and the lease purchase. So, the base lease establishes a relationship with, normally as a trustee, but with the lessor, in this case, it's Bloomsdale Bank, where the district actually leases the facilities to the lessor. The term of the base lease extends five years past the final payment of the lease financing. So, you say, well, why five years? Well, if the district, remember I said you have to have annual appropriation, putting it in your budget. By having it extend five years past that date, it's basically just a protection for the lessor that the district is going to make your payments because, let's say, if you didn't make your payment, they would be able to deprive you of being able to use those facilities. So, with the base lease extending past another five years, if you didn't pay the last year or so saying, well, it's the last year, we don't need to, it's no big deal, because that base lease is in place for another five years, you would be five more years not able to use it. So, that's really the, the big thing there. Rarely is it ever executed or put into place. I've never had a district or county ever not make their lease payments. And then there's also the lease purchase agreement. So, it's the legal document that provides for the lessor, bank, to lease the facilities back to the district for their intended use. Once the final payment is made, both the lease purchase agreement and the base lease both collapse. So, they're gone, and it no longer obviously exists, just like when you make the final payment, if you have a mortgage or on a car, it becomes yours, and then you can remove any liens and encumbrances. Are there any questions on that part before I move into the numbers? Or anybody? Okay. There's a little packet in front of everybody's seat. So, I'm gonna go through the numbers. Dane's gonna go through the second document, and then I'll follow up with the resolution at the end. With Schedule One, this is the repayment plan that can be locked in this evening, so that interest rate of four point two five percent. You'll notice in the top-left corner of the actual schedule, you have a date of June twenty-seventh. I picked that date for a couple of reasons. One, it's before the end of the fiscal year, so this financing will close in this fiscal year. Two, and really the biggest reason I did that was in having some conversations with the title company and the transaction moving forward, I wanted to ensure that the title company is going to have funds available upon closing of everything else. So, by having it there, and then with the following week being Fourth of July, a lot of people being on vacation and out, I wanted to make sure that funds would be available at the time when you need them. As far as payments are concerned, you see average payments around two-hundred-and-seventy-five, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars per year. The one thing that currently is a little different from the other financings that LJ Hart and Company has done for the district, so typically, we've always had a five-year call feature. Granted, those financings were a little longer than five years. With this, these, this lease purchase will be callable at any time in whole, but not in part. So, what that means is, the district, if you had extra funds and you wanted to pay off this lease financing, you could do so at any time, but it would have to be the entire thing as opposed to a partial prepayment. I will be following up with the bank to see if they would be willing to have it as a partial prepayment, but currently, as it is, it is in full only without partial prepayments. On page two, Schedule 1A, this is just a quick showing the, that call feature. Basically, I have it that if you had funds available as of July twenty-seventh, you could pay off the entire thing, plus the accrued interest that would happen between, that it, you know, those thirty days that it would be outstanding. On page three, I have the sources and uses of funds. So, you can see, we have a financing of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. From that, those costs of issuance, so typically, there's like five or six different things, but I was able to eliminate many of them. So, there's special tax council, so the legal fees for preparing the legal documents that are in that brown folder over there, the private placement fees to LJ Hart and Company for working on the transaction and being able to put this together. And then I have an allowance for other closing costs. So, once I have, and I have, the reason it's an allowance is, once the title company has come up with the full disclosure of all of the items that will be included, and in talking with them, this is going to be sufficient. I do have a bit of a contingency built in. Any money left over from that twenty-seven fifty will be returned back to the district. So, it can exceed no more than twenty thousand dollars, leaving the remaining to make that payment. And then finally, how does it all fit into the overall budget? On page four, we have the cash flow. I'm using the assessed valuation in that green column. So, we have your five cents. So, these are the various funds that can be used to make the payment on this lease financing. So, we have the revenue from the five cent capital projects fund levy, which really is enough if you were to use just the levy, a little state assessed, and then the revenue from other sources is the full amount of merchants and manufacturing surtax that the district receives on an annual basis that can be put in any fund. You have that total in the darker green column, and then those payments that were copied over from Schedule One. So, as mentioned, the capital projects fund levy or the merchants and manufacturing basically makes the entire payment. So, there are those surplus funds just within that Fund Four. And this would have been having those, that on that far-right column, the debt service fund ratio, that would have been more relevant if we were going to be pursuing a rating on this because S and P, Standard and Poor's, is going to look for at least one and a quarter times revenue over the payment. So, the fact that you're over two times with those revenues, and I'm not including anything from classroom trust funds or your seven percent transfer, which are two other revenue sources that would be able to be used to make the payments on this financing. Any questions on the numbers? Okay, I'll turn it over to Dane.
Thank you, Courtney. Hi, guys. The closing procedures detail the flow of funds on June twenty-seventh. That's the next document you guys have right there. Specifically within paragraph two, Bloomsdale Bank will deliver funds to the title company. Then the title company will distribute funds as per the cost of issuance on the next page. Hand it back over to Courtney.
And then the, oh, do you have a question?
Question about the rate, actually.
Yes.
Sorry about going backwards. So...
That's okay.
Four and a quarter.
Yes.
We're expecting rates to go down, but is that renegotiable? I know you said it's, it's callable at whole, but not partial, but like, we're locked at that, but if rates were to drop for whatever reason, can we...
Can you re, um, you would be refinancing, so it would, it would be a re, another re-issuance of them, so there would be another set of closing costs?
Fees and stuff, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good question.
And then, maybe this is a question for Dr. Taylor, but the point oh-five going in Fund Four, we're not stuck on that, right? Like, we need to increase that, we could.
Yeah.
Move it from other funds.
So, when we talk about the tax rate in August, we would evaluate that at that point. Like Courtney said, there are enough funds in there now, but we might wanna look at that to make sure we're covering all of our other costs such as HVAC updates, roofing...
We talked about that in the past. Other capital group.
I just looked at the seven percent transfer. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars for this school year. It's a transfer from Fund One to Fund Four, so we'll take that into account as well when we do that.
Is that number...
Calculated by the state.
Okay, it's not flexible.
No.
But the state tells you to do, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is this your getting here?
Nope, sorry.
Nope, you're totally fine. And then finally, the resolution. So, it's authorizing the district to enter into a lease purchase transaction. Section two is the biggest section towards the bottom. The final payment's not gonna be later than two thousand twenty-nine. The interest rate will not exceed four and a quarter percent. And then that second-to-last line, that the lease shall be payable and whole at any time following reasonable notice to the lessor. So, that's what I was referring to, to see if that could be changed such that it would still be at any time, or even if it were, if there were a year, you know, call date on there, locking it in, that you wouldn't make any prepayments for that first year, but then thereafter, it could be in part. The biggest difference and the biggest reason why it may not be in part is because we're not working with a trustee bank, and it's just essentially a loan with that private placement with, with the bank itself. If any partial prepayments, so think about if you have a car loan or even a house loan. If you're making a prepayment, they're not re-amortizing it. So, if you had a car payment of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, and you make, you know, fifty dollars each month for a few months, they're not gonna re-amortize and say, well, now your car loan payment's gonna be two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. Same thing. So, it's would, if you could make a partial, just not re-amortizing, but just cutting off the back end. So, that would also be a potential benefit. You would save on interest expense, just your payments aren't gonna change up until the very end.
Does the bank own the property that...
No, you own the property, so that's with those, the base lease and the lease purchase agreement.
Will we give up the rights to, to that property that you have?
Yes, yes.
One of the interesting pieces, as I was talking to Courtney about, ways to approach this, and she said this is a little bit unconventional from what LJ Hart has done before, was the, the chance to connect with a local bank. So, she did reach out to Bloomsdale Bank, and doing it this way saves us a significant amount of money in fees, and it also allows a, a local bank to get involved in the process as well.
Did you, did you approach the banks, or did you...
I did. Bloomsdale was the first one that I had called.
Was there other banks involved?
Uh, there were no other banks involved. Depending upon how the outcome would have, was with my conversation with Bloomsdale, would have then necessitated either a different phone call or, you know, moving forward with that rating process.
Can you comment on the rate percentage? It's favorable in the market?
The four and a quarter, absolutely.
That's what I thought.
Yes, yes. Especially with, I mean, and the big thing that we're seeing with a lot of our financings, I'm seeing a lot of four percent coupons with yields. So, when we sold the last two bond issues, we sold them in a premium. So, we had that five percent interest rate, sorry, five percent interest rate, and we had the lower yields, let's say it was a three percent for ease of comparison. The gap that was in between there was generating more money over and above the ten million dollars that we issued. In this case, what we're seeing a lot of investors wanting as opposed to those premium structures is an original issue discount structure, which means, this is the interest rate, four percent, though a lot of our schools, but the yields are higher. So, the difference, when you have a yield higher than that, four percent, they're getting less money. So, if we would have sold your ten million dollars like that, you would have gotten less than ten million dollars of face value. The idea behind that being, in five years, many of those are going to be callable, the likelihood of being able to refinance a four percent coupon is not as likely as a five percent coupon. So, that's, that's somewhat what's driving that structure, so the fact, these are sold at par. So, there's no premium, there's no O I D, there's just, we're selling one million, two twenty-five, and that's what's gonna be deposited to then make the payments on the various things. Any other questions? Good questions, in fact. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Dr. Keller, anything else from you?
Sir.
The next item on the agenda is a public input session where the public can ask any questions regarding the lease purchase information. Hearing now, I would say the next item on the agenda is to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the lease purchase public hearing of the Board of Education and enter regular open session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you wanna get the paper? Are you gonna hang out until the end of the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Might be a while. Might be a while.
Are you spending the night in St. Genevieve?
No. I've always signed stuff at the end of the meetings, these meetings.
All right, we will move on to open session, and our agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the St. Genevieve R2 Board of Education norms, which are available in the board docs packet. And the next item is the MSBA monthly report.
Welcome to the June edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. MSBA's Director of Outreach, Caitlin Whaley, says that this year's session was unusual from start to finish.
The, the two thousand twenty-four legislative session was a bit odd, I think, to kinda sum it up. We started off with a lot of, a lot of bills. A historic number of bills filed, thousands of bills, and both in the education realm and just overall, it became clear semi-early on that the number of bills actually passed was gonna be very few. So, specific to education, you saw that narrow down to Senate Bill seven twenty-seven extremely quickly, and that became almost the entire focus of all the major education groups, was what was and was not in seven twenty-seven, and overall, just very few bills passed. I think, including the budget, it was like forty-nine bills, which is exceptionally low when you're starting from five thousand.
Caitlin says that with the passage of Senate Bill seven twenty-seven, there are now more issues that school board members will need to be aware of going into the next budget year and legislative session.
And we will be continuing to put out both policy and general guidance on what seven twenty-seven means in practice and practicality. A lot of what is in seven twenty-seven is budget-related, and so that is going to be a fight for next year, is to fight that you need to fund all of these additional mandates that we've put on school districts, the, the teacher salary increases, and you can't fund them at the expense of things like the foundation formula and transportation. We have to have that overall net increase in funding to keep it from being a huge local tax increase on our school districts.
And although the session is over, Caitlin says it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators, and also noted, the outstanding outreach efforts of school board members this past session.
I'm, I'm new to MSBA, but I was absolutely floored by the outpouring of support and enthusiasm for advocating on these issues. We had so many board members and districts step up and voice their opinions and concerns, do, you know, do that outreach that we were asking of them, because I know Brant will say it, and I will say it, and Mike will say it. Legislators wanna hear from people in their districts, and it's much more meaningful for them to have a conversation with somebody that lives in their area and reps, represents their local school districts than it is for, you know, the MSBA advocacy team in Jefferson City. So, your work was absolutely noticed. We got feedback from the governor's office, that they were very impressed by the amount of outreach that they received. And so, every time we conduct that outreach, we're laying groundwork that school board members are a trusted voice and a trusted advocate in public education, and we can continue to build that up as a resource going forward.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on these issues. Make your plans now to attend the two thousand twenty-four MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers, along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. And past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the two thousand twenty-four Paul Morris Community Service Award. The award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through June twenty-eighth, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda I have just presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy B D D H dash one, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to the public comment portion. Public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items on the post of the agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking, and if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I have no public comment cards.
Nor do I.
Next, we have a report from the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In your packet, you will see some notes of appreciation. I think, Dr. McLeod, you put several in there. What were those?
Those were for the scholarship from, I guess now I'm drawing a blank, for the Grow Your Own Scholarship. So, we were able to take advantage of that, and so they wrote it out to several of you, and thank you for allowing us to pursue that grant.
Next on the superintendent's report is the Fowler-Buck service inspection. You will see that the Highway Patrol came in and did an evaluation on February twenty-sixth. And I met with Buck shortly after this, and they talked about a couple items that they had previously fixed that popped up again. They've traditionally been, if not a hundred percent, mid to high nineties. They fell just under that at eighty-eight point six percent this year due to a couple, I think a taillight was on that morning, and then they inspected it, and it, it was out. So, there were a couple of those snafus that surprised them a little bit, which put them down at eighty-eight point six percent, but still, that's a quality pass rating. And they got those items fixed shortly thereafter. Next, we have the backpacks for Friday program, and I believe that's you, Dr. McLeod.
Yes, so typically, we covered this in the, in the winter, but we've talked about sending out our thank you notes, and it didn't really coincide with when people are used to giving because they, they said, well, I gave, but it didn't line up with the report. So, we decided to shift it to June. So, this is essentially a repeat of the report that we gave in the winter, but there are a few other updates. So, again, we have partnered with the Southeast Missouri Food Bank, and they have been able to maintain the price of the backpacks again for the next year, which is three hundred fifty dollars per student. And right now, they are covering seventy dollars of that for us, the food bank is, but we've built in for three hundred fifty dollars in case if they don't have the funding one year. We still have enough money to make sure the backpacks go home. This is for thirty-six weeks' worth of food, and we start in September so we can identify those that need it, and then we run that all the way through May. And then it's funded through local donations, our community organizations, local businesses, community members. And our final one is a new one, Care to Learn, which you'll, you'll learn a little bit here from Ms. Gek. I'll wait for her to kinda talk about it. So, in twenty-three, twenty-four, so this past school year, we were able to provide fifty-five backpacks, which totals a total of nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand dollars. The food bank was able to cover almost four thousand of that, but the rest were covered through donation. So, we're very lucky to live in a community where people are willing to give and help out others. In Bloomsdale, it was twenty-one backpacks, and their enrollment has three hundred twenty students, and we have thirty-four backpacks out of the five hundred and thirty-five students in St. Genevieve Elementary. And we wanted to give a special thank you to our star students and Mr. Robinson, Mr. Hole, and Ms. Grine. They help pack those. Every month, they come on a big pallet, they have to sort them out and figure out how it all gets to the students in a way where it's equal and is distributed correctly. Ms. Grivinger and Ms. Kingery and Ms. Rowland have all overseen the distribution once they get to the building, so they make sure that the students get the backpacks, but it's not a big deal where other kids are going, well, why do you have that, and I don't have it? So, they make sure that they're taken care of in a discreet manner. In our maintenance department, as usual, they're coming through, they deliver and transport those to BLE for us so that we don't have to make a second trip to kinda get it. And then, of course, the building administration for continuing to support our backpack program. As you can see, we have quite the list of people that have given throughout the year. So, this is an updated list from winter. So, there are a few names that came off only because they typically give in, say, like July. So, once they give, we'll put them back on the list for the next report. And with that list, I believe we have nine new ones on here that you did not see in the winter. So, our list continues to grow, and we're excited about that. We have a couple people in the room that are giving.
We do!
Yeah, yeah. And again, we wanna shout out Care to Learn. They provide immediate funding, and you'll hear a little bit... Um, they provide immediate funding and you'll hear a little bit more about that but what they do is they they find ways to match our backpack program and so what they're doing is they're stretching out those donations to cover even more students. Um, here in this slide you'll see that it is a two hundred eighty dollar donation. It gives to one student per week. Um, again, seventy dollars is really three fifty, seventy dollars is covered by the food bank. Um, and I believe that is all of my presentation. If anybody would like to donate, they can contact me, they can reach out or they can contact Ms. Gegg and she can point them in the right direction as far as giving to Care to Learn as well.
Are you supposed to send out something? You're gonna send it out now?
Um, hey, we've discussed that. I think we'll probably send out something now. I think we usually do send out something after the report so we'll probably start sending it now. Um, the December time was kind of nice, we've talked about that too because like that's the giving season. Yeah, so we may kind of look at it and send letters to people maybe in December that usually give that don't and just kind of give them a a reminder because I think sometimes people get that letter and they go, oh yeah, I'm gonna donate, so. Any other questions?
I just want to mention that, which may miss away from Mrs. Gegg to present, but Care to Learn was actually mentioned in the budget this year, uh, and the state legislature, state senate, they talked about Care to Learn. So, uh, the money that they appropriated to that was neat and to hear them supporting that was cool too, so.
Yeah, and I think she'll touch on it and I think we're already starting to see some benefits of it.
So that brings us to our Care to Learn end of year report and I asked Mrs. Stephanie Gegg, since she's the one spearheading this and really the one who's probably the most excited about it besides those students who are taking advantage of it, I asked her to come this evening to present on it.
So, um, hi, I'm Karate. How are you? I'm having a good summer. Um, so this is, we started this in, well technically we became a Care to Learn, um, chapter March first, happily. Um, and so we've really only seen what little time between March first and the end of the school year. And I was kind of hesitant at the beginning, like I was like, we have to fundraise so much money for them to even match it and all of those things and I was like, are we going to have enough funds for this or not? But, um, I've actually been pretty well and well by it. So, um, first and foremost, when we became a Care to Learn chapter, the Care to Learn headquarters found anonymous donors, there's two of them, um, who will match up to thirty-five thousand dollars of the funds that we fundraise, um, by the end of this year, twenty twenty-four. We have matched so far twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, so how that happened was in large part because we are funneling the backpacks for Friday, Fridays through there, through this because it is, um, meeting that hunger need. Uh, we can funnel that money through, um, Care, our Care to Learn chapter, uh, and it still goes directly to those backpacks on Friday but the money then gets matched, um, as fundraising money. It also gets reimbursed back to us through DESI. So DESI has given out, they currently have a grant, now they're gonna talk about it in July, they're renewing it for another year, but, um, everything that we spend that is meeting a student's health hygiene or hunger need, they reimburse it back. So, um, if we make that check out or that purchase for the backpacks for next year before the end of June, um, before this money potentially runs out because we don't know if they're gonna renew it for next year or not, um, it would definitely fall that for next year, backpacks we'd get given right back to us. There's about a three month turnaround. Um, so, um, so through the backpacks, uh, for Friday program, we raised just under twenty-seven thousand dollars and then just through fourteen donations of us kind of putting the word out about becoming a Care to Learn chapter, we've raised three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, we have, and all of that is like I said, being matched, um, and we have a few ideas of other fundraisers, um, that we're gonna work on doing. Um, we did send out some letters and got a little bit back that way. Um, Dr. Boyd had this brilliant idea, um, that we have a class that makes t-shirts and makes products. Well, um, with the t-shirts, if we add just one dollar and we put on there that one dollar will go to our school's Care to Learn chapter, we fundraise for every shirt that the school sells then through this class. So, um, that is an automatic fundraiser that's gonna go towards us. So just since we were established in March of this year, we have a product that had met approximately four hundred and twenty-five clothing or hygiene items were provided to students, over three thousand food needs were met. So the way that we calculated, I do have to keep pretty good records of all of this for DESI and for that reimbursement. Um, so we have food drawers in my office and in the counselors' offices at all of the buildings, um, and so kids come and get a snack, we count by kid, not by student, not by how many items they take. So when we say that we've met over three thousand food needs, that means that we've had students come in over three thousand times and we've given them at least one thing. Um, and for spring break, we did twenty-five bags, drawstring bags filled with different items. Um, I put thirty-five, Bailey, who was, um, right making, doing a ride up, she put thirty-eight and I think thirty-eight is accurate, I put that wrong on there. Um, and we did thirty-eight bags at the end of the school year. Um, and those kids really appreciate that. They are very, very excited. Um, I find out that, you know, they, um, always notice they got a little bit extra and it doesn't go very far, you know, especially at the end of the school year, but I feel like at least they have a few extra snacks, some things for supper, um, because we do a lot of my little microwave things, um, and then also like easy quick breakfast items. Um, we try to do as much nutrition as we can but it also has to be non-personal. Uh, and then we met a few other, um, just individual needs and I've encouraged the teachers to reach out to me if they have something that is a health, hunger, hygiene need for a student. So one teacher reached out and said she had a student whose glasses were just chronically broken and the parents were keeping the better pair at home. What can we do? Like we can purchase a second pair of glasses if the parents are okay with it and they were and we worked out, worked it out with the eye care facility and we, he now has a pair of glasses here at student, here at school that are his current prescription that are not broken. We even got like a, um, sports band strap to help keep them on his face. Um, then we purchased ultrasonic pest control devices for a family's home. They had some, um, issues with mice and, um, and really petrified of a variety of different things and we supported them and helped them with this. And then we paid off, um, six negative lunch balances for seniors that would have not been able to take home their diploma because they had that negative balance and we were happy to help with that. So, um, just lots of great things and it's, uh, we're outfitting the clothing closets more substantially. I'm able to just use these funds when I need to buy a pair of shoes or, um, to stock them with leggings or athletic shorts or any kind of clothing items. I help the, we've been able to help out the nurses' office and having, you know, underclothes and socks and gym clothes and things that, you know, sometimes come out and a lot of times don't. Um, and we're able to just make sure that we have plenty of items when they're needed and it's been really awesome to have, and I'm not even like touching the tip of the iceberg with the money. It's not like I'm, you know, just purchasing all over the place. Um, this kind of money is like above and beyond anything that I ever thought that I would ever need and it's just that when I need something I don't have to go, do I have enough funds to do this? So, um, it has been really pretty awesome. So, do you guys have any questions or anything about that?
So the twenty-six thousand, is that, uh, that's the match portion so we can achieve another six, seven, eight, nine thousand, I guess?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Cool.
Yeah, so and we have, like I said, until the end of December. Um, so that's where, like I said, with the the t-shirt or with the shirt program, with any other fundraisers that we, they talk about at Care to Learn about doing like big fundraising things, um, I'm not quite in a place where I can like organize a huge fundraiser, um, but I've thought of a few different things where we could do some fundraising and I am planning, like they they gave us all kind of like swag, um, but they gave me like a box for, um, fun donations. So I thought, you know, if I know who is collecting at gates for our home gate sporting events, if the box is just sitting there and someone wants to drop a dollar in or some change in, they can. Um, so those are gonna be the things that then will get matched, um, through December. And then Care to Learn has told me that they could potentially find additional donors for the next year and always helping us to have matching donations as long as we're putting in funds ourselves through fundraising, so.
I agree.
I think one of the the things that attracted you to this program was some of the red tape that we currently have to jump through when kids need help.
Yes.
Can you talk about that for a minute?
Well, so, um, you know, a school system has to, has to do a whole lot with auditing and 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 those funds all have to be explained and a lot of times there was just limitations. You couldn't give out a gift card for groceries because they could potentially use it to buy medication at the grocery store or alcohol. Um, whereas this kind of helps us to navigate around that because this is separate. This is separate from the school, this is not anywhere in the school funds. Um, Care to Learn is running this and organizing this and we do pay a yearly fee for that but it's it's minor in comparison to the amount of help that they're giving us to keep everything managed. Um, and so I can make arrangements with a local gas station and easily have, you know, pay the money to them and they can, you know, um, people can get gas if they need gas to go to appointments. Um, I can easily make an arrangement with a hotel if I need to and find, have a place for someone to stay. Those were things that were very difficult to do when we had to go through the school accounts. Um, I can, though, like I said, I think I can set things up, like even where I can do a voucher system with the Long dramatic, I can do a voucher system with Country Mart, um, where they, the the family goes and says, you know, I've been told we have, here's my voucher, I can spend two hundred dollars on groceries. And we don't have some of the difficulties, um, that running it through the school accounts caused for us and it's been really, really much more easy to manage and I can do a whole lot of purchasing, like they helped me to set up my own Amazon account, my own Walmart account, so I can just order through those business accounts, have it shipped directly here, it's taxed, it's, you know, tax free, it's exempt and then I can make sure that those things get directly to families really pretty quickly, um, whereas before it was just a lot of difficulty. It slowed things down, made it harder to meet those needs for the kids and the families. It was really awesome.
How do you, uh, find the kids that needs clothes, needs these things?
Well, I've been doing a whole lot, um, a lot of it the counselors know about and the nurses know about, you know, the kids come to them. Um, I've also been sending out emails to the teachers and making them aware of our program and how easy it is there's, they actually, again, Care to Learn is taking care of everything. Um, they created a form and a teacher can just type out the student's name, what they're struggling with, what their need is, and it shoots directly to me and then I can, you know, start working on figuring out how to help them, what they need and how to help them best. So it's where I can, you know, contact the family, what clothing do they need, what shoes do they need and just make an order and purchase it and and get it to them. So, um, it's a lot of word of mouth but there's also just a form that the teachers can, um, just fill out and reach out to me that way and let me know.
Amazing the number of students that come and get a snack.
Yes.
When I saw that number on there, I thought, wow.
Yeah, I have probably, I, you know, in the last couple of months I had an average of fifteen to twenty kids a day who would come to my office.
Did the word just spread or did you guys do something to let them know, hey, we've got this?
I, I mean, I've always had a few and I used to keep a lot of snacks in my office anyways and then, um, I had, we do have really great donors in our community so I had a smaller amount of funds but I would always make sure that I met those, had those things. Um, and I would, as kids would come in, you know, or maybe they were having a struggle that day and I would just say, are you hungry? Do you need a snack? Because sometimes, you know, like, they haven't had breakfast, that really affects their mood, you know? So, um, so then I, I let them have a snack and like anytime you want something, stop on by, okay? So then they start coming in, then they bring a friend, then they have, then they leave and go back to class, they have another one come in and they'd be like, I didn't have any breakfast either, what did you have? And so, um, it it's just a lot of word of mouth and and, you know, like I have my group and each council shop has their group because like they just, those kids know where they can go and they, you know, just make connections with the staff members but also like it also gives you an opportunity to check into them and how are they doing and it's true.
Is it just granola bars you're thinking of or crackers?
Um, it's those kind of things. Um, sometimes I have, uh, dry cereal, um, I have chips and crabs holes, um, we like meat sticks which are really close, but tacos sometimes. I sometimes have juice boxes and ganaches, um, Nutri Grain Bars, um, sometimes cookies. It's just kind of like I go and I, they like microwave popcorn, they love microwave mac and cheese. And, uh, I have container full cups microwave mac and cheese and they will come and wrap those on. A lot of them take those home and eat them and then they, they add that for stuff.
Sure.
So, yeah. Well, it's a good ease. We always have like the, they, I pull out my drawer because it's on a rolling cart and they're like, they're like, ooh, you restocked. But sometimes I have to, I have to be like, okay, two snacks, you guys have to still go get your lunches, like make good choices and this is, this is to help but you guys still go get breakfast and lunch, so. So, it's good, it's really good.
Good.
So if anybody ever wants to donate, it is really easy. Um, you can always reach out to me but there is a QR code, um, that is on caredtolearn.org and you can find chapters and then it lists, you can find the St. Genevieve chapter, we're one of forty in the state of Missouri, um, and our QR code and then also how to donate is right there. So if you know of anybody whoever is looking for a place to help out students, this is a great way. It will meet the needs to all of our students and the money all stays right here, that's the great thing. Like it doesn't get dispersed between multiple schools, it's ours. What is fundraised, what is matched is all, it goes right back to our students.
How much better do you need each year?
Oh, I mean, quite honestly, I was making due, um, on probably less than two thousand a year before. Um, and now, I mean, word of mouth is getting out, it could probably get better but I really think it's probably gonna be more around like five thousand. I, I mean, and I could go bigger, I could pay medical bills, I could pay dental bills, I could do a whole lot of bigger things and I think over time, but I'm really trying to kind of go small with it rather than like exhaust all of our funds and then have to fundraise even bigger to keep up with it. Um, and two, I really like to empower families, um, and while I have no harm in helping them, I also want them to be responsible and find ways to solve problems themselves and so sometimes I can give them a little bit of a temporary help but also give them guidance on how to resolve problems and fix things, big solutions. Um, and so that's kind of what I do. This is like a fit in between for that gap but then I also help to guide them in ways that they can resolve some of their issues long-term.
So do you take, like, do you want to donate some of those snacks? Do you take that? Do you use money?
No, no, that works too. Those are called in-kind donations, I just have to document them. Uh, St. Vincent de Paul loves to get in-kind donations and First Baptist Church, they love to give like a check every month. They've been wonderful, they've been with us for, um, the last couple of years. So we, we do all of that and we, um, keep track of all of that whether it's in-kind donations or it's, um, it's cash donations. So, thank you.
Thanks for all you did.
Thank you so much.
Oh my God. And I want to take a moment, you know, it's a great program but it it takes a special person to be able to administer that program and Stephanie has taken the lead on this and has done a fantastic job and I've been in her office to talk about other things when the kids come in and mob her for food and, you know, I have to step out of the way. So thank you very much.
And I think it's the relationships that she builds with the kids, you know, she, you, you asked about how, how does she get these kids to come in as a word of mouth? She knows the needs of the kids and she knows the needs of the family and I think that's a, that's a big part and that's, that's one of the reasons why she's so valuable for us as she is so invested within our school community and our families. And I just really appreciate that from her.
Thank you.
We appreciate you too, Stephanie.
Very much. Uh, the last item on my report are the end of year summary reports from each of the buildings and they're linked in your packet and they're linked on the presentation as well. Um, take some time to go through those if you haven't done so already. It it reminds us of why we're here and the programming that we offer and and the successes of our, of our students and our faculty and staff.
Yes.
It's gotta be some work, I'm sure.
Right.
It is well worth the read, so thank you.
Yeah, uh, the next principal reports, uh, will be scheduled on September seventeenth. We would do it in August but we'll just have a week of school under our belts. Um, so we're gonna allow them another month off and come back September seventeenth and restart those principals reports, so. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Next, uh, under unfinished business, we have a Prop SG update.
So every time Bailey and I talk about this, the list, the things that I have to cover gets longer and longer. We, two projects are finished so you'd think the list would get shorter but it just seems to grow. Uh, St. Genevieve Middle School, uh, substantially complete, um, turned out to be a fantastic facility. I know we all took a trip up there to walk around a little bit. Um, the elevator, um, received an inspection and there are several items that were addressed. There's one ventilation item that they're still questioning, uh, so our architects are working through with the inspectors on how to to remedy that. Uh, down in the nurse's office, they were waiting for some asbestos remediation, uh, and before they finished out that doorway in there that was still that concrete, uh, so Brock Miller's going to get on that as soon as they, uh, have some free hands, um, and then- And then that project will be complete. I know Mr. Draper started moving in and was excited to get in there. Mrs. Meyer started moving in at the end of the year. So it's going to be a great start to the school year with that, with that facility complete.
Oh, the elevator's not attached yet.
I'm sorry.
The elevator is not.
Well, I was trying to paint a little.
I know. We'll be ready by school.
Was what?
Be ready by first.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Yes. They were hopeful, so you know, Dr. Mercer and Mrs. Huffman did a drawing for the first student or a competition for the first student to be able to ride the elevator. So I, I still think they have that in their heads and they have the student identified and they're still planning on doing that at some point. But yes, it should be within a month. It'll be complete. Early Childhood Center, work continues on schedule. Wall panels in the classroom hallways are being installed. And you can see it's actually looking like a building now that they've got the outside on a little bit.
It's amazing.
Looking at it from Highway 61 gives you a scale of what that is. Yeah, it's pretty impressive. It seems that we will not be partnering on a detention basin. There've been a couple snags in that process. So we initially had, within the scope of work, some type of retention basin discussions. Our engineers had discussed that and our architects were aware of that. We kind of put that on hold because we were in conversations with the possibility of another one off-site. Doesn't look like that's going to go through. So we're going to return to those original plans and continue with a retention basin onsite.
Before you move on, can you talk about the cost implications of that, please?
So these are very rough numbers, but in talking with Taylor Engineering and K R J, they seem to think it can be done onsite in the neighborhood of $30,000. That was not in the scope of work. That was not bid. So that will be in addition to the bids that came in. And there is some extra field dirt, I think, out there and grading that can be done. But until, until we dig into it.
But it's not a budget buster?
It's a lot of money, but it's not a budget buster, yeah. It'll make it, you know, we've been doing everything we can to save money with value engineering. Our, our local contractors have been fantastic at coming in and bidding and being competitive. And looming on the horizon is that athletic facility. And we know that's out there and we know that's important. So we've been doing what we can to pinch every penny that we can. This makes an impact on that. But that being said, our, our hope is still be able to do a quality, quality athletic facility at the end.
About the water line, is anything new?
So that's all been approved and it has been in process. The last time I was out there was about a week ago. I'm not sure if they've made it all the way up to Maple Drive. I think they were about halfway up Maple Drive the last time I looked. But they had started cutting the asphalt and they have portions of it that are already complete. So it's, Mr. Bova, do you know anything more about that?
That's about, that's accurate.
Yes. So it's now an eight-inch line up there. We can't wait to get it complete so that we can do some pressure and flow tests on it to see how our sprinkler system is going to respond.
And I want to thank the Alderman for agreeing to work with us on that, so.
Yeah. It was in their budget, but budgets are tight and they were willing to look at what they could do to move it up, so.
So the, when, as we move forward, if we install our own water detention, none of our water, I mean, one of my concerns would be protecting the folks who are downstream. And there've been several who have kind of complained when we had a gully washer. So none of our water, once we get to the point where we need to be with our stormwater, will affect those folks downstream, right? That the water retention will retain all the water that comes onto our property.
Yeah, so the goal of a retention pond and really the task of Taylor Engineering is to develop a retention pond. I think they have several different measures and I can't remember the, I've been around engineers a lot, but not enough to remember their terminology. There's, there's a.
Two-year, five-year, 10-year.
And so they, they have the task of doing those calculations to determine how much water could possibly be needed to be retained. And that's how they will scale that retention pond. So I'm confident that once they're complete with those calculations, the water coming from our less porous areas will be funneled there and not impact those downstream.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, all that's always, they're always like certified and everything and approved in the city and agrees with it and.
We, next on the list for the Early Childhood Center is to meet with design companies for playgrounds and start talking about that and what that's going to look like. I think a couple of the facilities that we toured had more natural-type playgrounds. And I think there's, Bethany has in her head and some of the early childhood teachers have in their head some kind of a blend between the natural and more updated playground equipment. It would, it would, it would be great to think about extending Maple Drive out to 61 because there's going to be a significant amount of traffic going back to the Early Childhood Center on Maple Drive. And if you've ever been anywhere around that area during bridge line pickup, you understand the impact that it has on traffic and congestion in that area. So there's a field owned by M L C out there that I think it's been entertained before. It's been discussed by the city. It's been discussed by Special Road District. Even some employees of Mississippi Lime Company have been discussing the possibility of extending Maple Drive out to 61. We're on board for that and I think that would benefit most people involved. So we would love to sit down at the table at some time. That would involve a whole lot of entities, city, county, Special Road District, Citizens Electric, Mississippi Lime Company, MoDOT. There's a lot of people who, who have a hand in that. We're ready to start that conversation anytime, so just wanted to throw that out.
I feel that it's probably in the city's future comprehensive plan also. So it would be a good deal to push forward with that.
I completely agree.
Yes, yes.
Moving on to St. Genevieve Elementary. There's a 3D rendering of what that building is going to look like. After the total bids came in, it was approximately $4.75 million for the addition. The district was, along with our construction manager at risk, was able to identify a savings of about $96,000 through the value engineering process. If you've been out there, you've seen the fence going up. That was strategic. I wanted the fence to go up before everybody left for the summer so that the shock value was gone. And that we could talk about the best way to arrange buses, to rearrange parking. And we're going to talk about parking a little bit later as well, so. Construction will start soon. They've begun moving equipment and talking about where staging areas are going to be and safety requirements and all of that stuff. So we anticipate construction taking approximately 13 months. I believe Mrs. Gegg and Mr. Kingery have already been talking to some of their families about what the beginning of school is going to look like. That's work in progress. We've already talked about student drop-off in the morning and how that's going to be impacted by the fence, where visitors are going to enter the building, how that's going to be handled. So they are working hard on that and they will have a plan out to families before the school starts. Parking. We are hoping to address some of the parking issues that this is going to cause. And if you were out front recently, you've seen they've started on some of that already. Bowman Construction came up and this was an alternate bid. They had the main parking area and then two alternates for parking. This was alternate number two. And it gets us about 16 spots. When they finished that, Davy and I walked out there and we were thinking about where we could find additional parking. And there was an additional grassy area. And they're out there doing the work already. Their equipment's here. So we called Mr. Bowman to come back and talk about options. We then called other contractors to get competitive bids. We're going to talk about that later. We feel like it's appropriate, rather than to just leave those 16 spots, to take advantage of some cost savings with the equipment being there and expand parking. So the idea is to come into that middle school parking lot where the maintenance crew is and then create some fill going down the hill and create 16 additional spots there. They would be facing the elementary school. So as those plans are finalized, I'll get you some, some renderings of what that's going to look like as well. We are also talking about adding some parking back by the football field where the sinkhole is, by the black fence. That, that transitioned a bit today. We, we toured an athletic facility today down at Cape Central. They were kind enough to host us. Several coaches went down. Dr. Boyd went with us, our architects, and Colin from Brock Miller. So we're talking about the best location for an athletic facility and that parking area might be impacted by that as well. We're not sure. We're talking, if we could find some land, it would be much easier to put a 300 by 120-foot building. Trying to fit that behind the pack is difficult, so we're looking at, at all available options. And wrestling athletic facility. Like I just said, we're, we're in the process of seeing that footprint, what that might look like. The current plan is 300 by 120 feet. We may have to adjust that if it does have to go behind the pack to, to an L-shaped building, which will be more 100 feet both ways with a little internal corner. Right now, that looks to be, and the original cost proposal was about $5.1 million. Barring any additional budget constraints by unforeseen circumstances, that, that seems reasonable and we're hopeful to be able to complete that.
And that was the top-tier choice?
That was the top-tier, yeah. So what that means, just to be clear, is a wrestling facility on one end and then an indoor turf facility, which all organizations and groups would be able to use. I think band, football, baseball, softball, golf. The facility that we toured at Cape Central had an indoor turf just like it. They built the indoor turf just like they would build it outdoor. It had gravel underneath of it and, you know, all those little black rubber pieces and it was fantastic. It's brand new, so it's still shiny and new. But they, they spent a lot of time on that. I saw four different renderings of that before they finalized it. And it, it's a more of a football facility, soccer facility, because they've got locker rooms and showers and all of that too. So that's a work in progress and we'll give you an update on that as we go.
Dr. Taylor, when we finish the early, not the early job, the elementary and the potential athletic building, will all of our winter sports teams be able to practice onsite?
Our hope, so right now, what I believe is happening is during the winter, the boys' team will practice here and the girls' team will go to the community center or vice versa. Our hope is that that elementary gym will be utilized for those practices. So there won't be an early practice and a late practice, which is why they do that. That we will be able to host all of our practices onsite.
What's the length of the gym? I guess I never really see the inside.
It's going to be a standard.
Standard gym, okay.
Yeah.
Bleachers?
I think five rows of bleachers. It has to hold, I think we have it holding 730 people. So there has to be seating. Yeah, I think it's five or six rows is where we landed.
One side, both sides?
One side.
So right now, that gym is utilized by middle school wrestling. So by having a separate wrestling facility that's large enough for our middle school, that opens up hopefully the availability of that facility to be able to do that. And then once games get started, boys and girls, a lot of times, one team is out playing games. So then it becomes a non-existent issue as well, so. Or we have a home game, but those don't start until after the other team has had an opportunity to put their practice.
Thank you.
I believe, is that my last slide last? I hope that's my last.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is transportation.
Just wanted to give you an update. We met with some representatives from the bus drivers to talk about possible options, pros and cons, what's impacting them. We really thought it was important that we sat down and that they felt heard because we know that this is an uncomfortable transition that nobody asked for. It depends on the lens that you're looking at this through. I mean, you can look at this as something that's unfortunate and it's just happening to us or you can look at this as an opportunity to perhaps make some things better. We're, we're trying to look at it as an opportunity and do what we can to make things better for Fowler employees. So some of the benefits are retirement would be an option if they're working 30 or more hours a week. I'm sorry, 20 or more hours a week. Health insurance would be an option if they're working 30 or more hours a week. Integrated processes with, with what we currently do. We've always had a great relationship with Fowler, so that, that was pretty seamless in and of itself. We worked together with bus drivers and they came in to meet with administrators as needed. Leave days, we've talked about. AMI days, we've talked about. Those impact bus drivers because they don't have to drive those days when teachers and students are, are having virtual instruction. And then a possible attendance stipend that we're talking about for those drivers who, who meet their monthly perfect attendance. Some challenges that, that we've identified are unemployment challenges. They currently receive unemployment when they're not working. School districts are a bit different. They have a reasonable expectation of employment coming back the next year and those are scheduled breaks. So it's a bit different for school districts. Route times as well, I think we've addressed that. They currently have a three-hour minimum route time and we're looking at extending that to a four-hour minimum route time because we understand the challenges associated with not only the unknown that comes with the transition, but also no more unemployment for them and, and the way that that's viewed, so. And then some challenges are overtime as well. Right now, they play, pay a flat rate of $16 an hour for trip time and keep that separate from route time for us. We have to look at that and when they get to 40 hours cumulatively, then we have to start paying time and a half. So we're going to have to evaluate that as well and the financial impacts of that, so. All that being said, last month, I presented to you all in closed session those, those contracts for your review. We've, we worked with Brad and Kristi Mull and their legal, our legal teams got together and they finalized those contracts. So this motion is to do really three things. Finalize the contracts with Fowler Bus Service and Shirley Meyer Trust and to approve the financing that was presented earlier this evening. Do you all have any questions?
I think the only thing I want to point out is we're going to discuss the salary schedule and new business, correct?
Correct.
So those would be two, if it's a consultation agreement and then a purchase agreement for the tower, the property, including the equipment and the bus fleet?
Yes.
The tower property?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Fowler Bus Service Incorporated and Shirley Meyer Trust and approve financing presented for the purposes of purchasing the property, including the bus fleet, building, contents and radio tower.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Great opportunity for us.
All right.
Dr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate at this point?
Yes, sir.
Have some paperwork to sign?
Sure.
Much as I look forward to Brad's.
Absolutely.
Can we take a little break? Signs of paperwork.
Mr. Bova, may we take a little break and sign some paperwork?
Yes, absolutely. Appreciate that. All righty.
It was a nice break before we get into bread bids.
Onto new business. First item on the agenda is the adult food service prices.
So we were hopeful that Desi was going to release the information that we needed to be able to do this this evening. And Lori Meyer Roth has been looking every day to see if that information was released. It was not, so we weren't able to calculate these. We will have to revisit this, table this and revisit it next month.
We need to table that all?
Yes, we do.
Motion to table the approval of the adult food service prices for the 2024-25 school year until the next meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table this. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item are the food service bids for bread.
So, we had two bidders, four total. We received two no bids, Roser's Country Mart and Holloway Distribution. Holloway Distribution was significantly cheaper on all of the categories, so my recommendation is to approve Holloway Distribution for our bread.
Did they do that now?
Sorry?
They've had it, right?
Yes.
On these types of bids, do we go out and ask for the bids, or do we just put an RFP out there?
So, we advertise, but then a lot of times, we will reach out to people who we feel like will be competitive or will make the process more competitive. So, it's a little bit of both. It just depends on what it is.
So, say, well, does it usually bid, or you don't have to pass?
I haven't seen one of theirs in the past. I don't remember seeing it.
It's been a while since I've seen a three-year bid, too, but in light of food prices, I understand.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the bread bid from Holloway Distributing for the 24-25 school year, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the food service bid for milk.
We solicited two. We received one no bid, and Prairie Farms came in at thirty-seven cents for one percent chocolate milk, thirty-three cents for skim milk, one percent milk was thirty-four cents, and lactose-free milk was seventy-nine cents. And Jordan said we did have a few lactose-free milks each day that were being used, so that was interesting. So, my recommendation would be to approve the Prairie Farms dairy bid.
Motion to approve the milk bid for Prairie Farms for the 2024-25 school years presented.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have waste management services bid.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, why don't we get bids on milk, bread? Why don't you get bids on other foods? Why not other, why not hamburger and chicken, la la?
I think because those are more perishable items and need to be sourced more locally.
So, you just buy from the district?
Yeah. So, I think those are a little bit harder to transport and for any length of time, anyway. Those and those other things come, I think Jordan has some distribution avenues and certain requirements that she has to follow for particular items. Cheese is in my head for some particular reason.
You'd probably get better pricing on these bid packages like that and save the school district money, so.
She would be able to get you the specifics.
Like, what about this distributor for food versus district distributing for food?
Well, if you'll remember recently, with the shortages, she was having to reach out to anybody who would listen and try to get items that we needed, and we were really paying the price for it at that time, too, because the prices were going up. It's gotten a little better, and we hope it continues to get a little better, but she worked hard during that time.
If you want information, I'm sure Jordan has it, but go to Lori Meyer-Roth, because she will tell you the nightmares of getting this food.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. We did talk to Top Tier and Woody and Sons, and for a variety of reasons, they weren't able to bid at this time. They are hopeful that they will be able to in the future, and I think some of it has to do with the cubic yardage containers being available to them. And you can see, we have six cubic yardage containers for one-eighty, one-ninety for one year, eight cubic yardage for two-thirty, and then, district-owned compactor pickup per load and a haul rate per ton of two-fifty and fifty, and then, the pack container at seventy-five, and then, there was a discrepancy in the documentation, and they were talking about, it said bi-weekly, and really, it's every two weeks. So, they put that little note in there as in, they wanted to be sure that their bid was accepted, so they put that little note in there because it did say bi-weekly, but we meant bi-monthly, so. My recommendation, you can see the prices in comparison to a three-year, they're attempting to protect any cost increases. My recommendation would be to go with the one-year bid from the public services.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid of the public services to provide waste management service to the district for the 2024-25 school year.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the turf and non-turf grass management services bid.
So, it was just time to put this bid out. Occasionally, we will auto-renew, but I felt it was appropriate, given the fact that I'm first year, and wanted to make sure we were checking all the boxes, that we put it out. I know Mr. Gag started his lawn service up since our contract was in place and wanted to give everybody an opportunity. It came back, the Midwest Lawns was the only one to bid, and their prices are the same that they were in our prior contract. So, my recommendation would be to approve the Midwest Lawns bid for Grass Management Services.
I also make a motion to approve the bid of the Midwest Lawns to provide the turf and non-turf grass at the Yanks North and Yanks South in Leon's for the 24-25 school year with the option to renew the contract.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I have, can you, can you explain the scope of work they're doing there? Is it the Yanks South? What's the turf?
So, the turf is...
Like raking it or?
Yes. I think we do some of that manual raking as well, but there's some grooming stuff that needs to be done that they handle. The majority of it is the outfield and the weed-eating around the fence and all of that stuff.
In Yanks North-South in Leon's?
Yes.
Okay, what about the hillsides there? Is that, I guess it's ours, too, really?
I think it's all of it.
Okay. Do you know where the park line lays with Yanks North?
The city park.
Well, Yanks North, the hill goes all the way up to the park, you know what I mean? Versus like Yanks South?
That first hill, as you plateau, that's the proper line.
Okay. All right. Sorry to hold it up.
Right. The first one is the other side.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the photography services bid.
So, we were hopeful to get a little competition. I think we did reach out to Cheekwood and speak to them, and then, I'm not sure if we heard back from Interstate Studio or Life Touch, but Wagner was the only one that showed up to the bid opening. They were only the only one to submit a bid, and they're chomping at the bit. I've got a couple emails in my inbox to come in and meet. We ran into some snafus last year, and I think we put a document together to get some of that information for them, because Chip Wagner is very responsive, and he's one of the emails, and he wants to sit down and see what they can do better. So, our hope is that this year, some of those things that went wrong last year will be improved. So, my recommendation would be to approve the Wagner Portrait Group Photography Bid.
I have a motion to approve the bid of Wagner Portrait Group to provide photography services to the district for a five-year period effective July first, 2024.
Is five-year normal? I guess it needs to, is it the five?
I think that was our prior, and that's how we put it out.
So, the picture pack, well, we're giving specifics now, but I heard a lot of grief and complaints about the cost of it. It's just astronomical. I just wondered with the digital download, there's fifteen dollars worth of package to need to buy something, also get the digital download, and just, I mean, nobody else is bidding on it, so it is what it is, I guess, but.
Yeah.
Local people, there's so many photographers, I've had people talking throughout the years, but nobody threw out a bid.
When it's not big time, do independent people, photographers, ever reach out, and then you say, "Well, the bid will go out in whatever."
Yeah, so we'll take their card, or we'll make a note that the next time it goes out to be sure and contact them and let them know that it's being bid out. And that's what they're usually calling about, saying, "When is the next time it's gonna be bid?"
When is the next, right? Okay, but nobody really did that.
Photography's been a little different recently. We were really good for a while when Sheila was here with Portrait Gallery, and then, it just, it's, and like Josh said, it's kind of a dying art. It's more digital now, and kids are more digital, and families are becoming more digital. So, the hard copies are, I don't want to say they're antiquated quite yet, but they're moving in that direction. So, it's a different environment for photography services right now.
Was it in the paper?
I believe we advertised for two weeks.
I thought it was. Bailey, on that?
Chris has got it.
Do we have to go five years?
Yeah, that's, I think we're like five years, we should.
We don't have to do anything. Say no to the whole page.
I mean, I like, I'm willing to give it a second chance, or a second chance to clean up some of the issues that they had. I'm not saying that's not a good thing, but, I mean, five years is a long time, too. They have us then, like we...
Was the RFP for five years?
It was, but that doesn't mean you have to stick with it. If you'd like a three-year, I can take that back to them. If you'd like a two-year, we can do that as well. That might...
So, we currently have a motion and a second for five years, right?
Do I make a motion? I can rescind it.
Is there a motion and a second for a five-year?
Right now, there's a motion, but we never do a second.
I mean, are they gonna change the prices on us, though?
Yeah. Then I can go back to the last one. Oh, our last one was three years.
Can we go, can we change to the three years?
Yeah.
Or we can, or do we have to contact?
So, I think probably we need, now that Chrissy said that, I think it probably needs to be rebid with a three-year.
Oh, I think you can propose, propose, you can make the motion for three years, and if you go back to the prior company and they don't like that, which I don't even think in the bid proposal is set.
So, identify the years. We'll take that to them and see what they say.
So, I can change five to three-year?
Do you want to rescind your motion?
So, I'll rescind the motion, and then I can do motion for three years.
Well, or I think I can, can't I, Chrissy? I mean, is that...
It was five.
Yeah, I, I rescind.
Are you okay with that? Are you thinking more, too?
Well, it wasn't really done yet. I was waiting, so it was never... We never had a second.
Okay, so you rescinded your motion, and you made a new motion.
Hang on. Jerry, what's your thought process in length of time? Is three years still too long?
I think that's still pretty long, considering we haven't been unhappy with them. I mean, if we were like, "Gosh, we love these guys," I'd say, "Yeah, but we're not even really happy with them."
I believe there should be a clause in the proposal that says that we should be able to, you know, give them a sixty-day notice if we're unhappy with reasonable cause, right? Like, any kind of contract, not any, but a lot of contracts, if you're like, "Okay, we're gonna sign this for three years, but we have all these reasons to say we're not happy about it," then we can do a ninety-day notice, like, hey, we've done all these things to try to mitigate the things that we, that are going wrong, so we're, we're gonna put it in this contract. We can look at that and make sure.
So, my first question is, is how quickly does this have to be put into place to be ready for the new school year? Is July even too late if these guys fit together with Wagner negotiating?
I think we can make that work. I think they're wanting to get on the schedule. That's the biggest problem, is to get...
They're trying to be a day schedule. I know that already.
Right. That's what I wondered, is it like, we gotta go in?
They're trying to do media day, they're trying to also get their, our dates for back to school, because it fills up with all the other schools, and then we're led with...
Well, could we approve it for a one-year and take that to them and ask them if they're good with one-year?
We can do whatever you like.
And I honestly think that the length of time maybe isn't the biggest concern it is, but like, if they had a digital version or digital option-only package, I wouldn't hear so many complaints from parents saying, "This is outlandish, and this is ridiculous how much I gotta pay just to get a picture of my student."
To get a picture that you don't know what it's gonna look like.
So, your motion could be framed that way for whatever length of time you deem is appropriate, and then say with the expectation that we're going to attempt to negotiate some type of digital-only option.
It is, so the proposal that they signed up for is three-year. I'm sorry. I was wrong in putting it, I mean, for a relevant motion.
Okay, is there, is there an option that, I guess they probably don't have it, that says it's a digital-only?
Isn't that package D?
No, you gotta, you gotta purchase a regular package, and then you can pay fifteen dollars and get the digital.
So, at a minimum, you would have to purchase C to have an option for D.
And everybody just wants D?
So, it's twenty bucks.
Maybe they don't get any money on that, which is why they're gonna do, because everyone's gonna take that one.
There is a clause at the end of this proposal that they did sign, St. John McHenry School is a seven-year or may withdraw from this contract at the end of each completed school year without reason. The other party must be notified in writing before either person in the contract. Does that cover it?
To get out of it, but it doesn't cover us for the digital only. So, if I re-rote it here, I have, I'm sorry, I'm a horse, but, motion to approve the bid of the Wagner Portrait Group to provide photography services to the district for a one-year period, doesn't have to be that, but they got, with the expectation to negotiate a digital package only effective July first, 2024?
I love that.
Sounds good.
I, I...
Making that motion, too?
I can make the motion right now, okay.
Then everyone. Did that? One year with a kind of a decree to negotiate a digital-only package.
We also, I think, sorry. We also need to enter the idea of what if they completely withdraw and they don't have any type of service.
We've got a camera.
Then we have to come, then we'll have to come back.
Bailey's pointing at John.
You can, you can, like she said, cancel at the end of the year if you decide by April.
If we get to March fifteenth and we're not happy next year, we'll need to tell them we went out and we have a bid. But you can also keep it in your digital copy, three-year without digital copy, and ask them if they'd be interested in that, working with us on the digital.
Maybe we don't have the digital copy now, because they might say no, but do some hardcore talking to them and say, "Hey, we probably are gonna come back next year if you want to do it."
Yeah, that's a good idea, too.
You know, I mean, we went and did it.
They're wanting to come in and meet to talk about those issues, and we can bring that up.
But it wouldn't leave us high and dry for the school year. So, right now, it says three-year, and we did that since we just get out of it.
That was my point, I think I'm making one on my, on my, my...
Well, I'm still gonna leave with the expectation to negotiate, it doesn't say demand, you know, it just says, okay.
But it's a three-year motion, though.
Yes.
Jerry made a motion for...
Do you want to restate your motion, Jerry?
Sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Motion to approve the bid of the Wagner Portrait Group to provide photography services to the district for a three-year period with the expectation to negotiate a digital-only package effective July one, 2024.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. There we go.
Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. What I said earlier about meetings? Next, we move on to the parking lot updates.
Yes. Bailey went out and took some photographs of what our current progress looks like. Like I discussed earlier this evening, we got done with this component of it, and then we're looking at that area, the green space just above it towards the maintenance shed, and looking for more opportunities to find some parking. Do you want me to point it out?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Lance has got it with that blue arrow over there.
So, that's the drive, above, to the right of his arrow is the drive for middle school?
Correct.
Okay.
So, what he's talking about is coming into that drive from the middle school and then turning left and parking right there facing the elementary building.
And they like, they're gonna put ground, so it's like two levels, kinda, right?
Absolutely. There's going to be about an eight-foot wall up in front of there, and that's quite a bit of cost to put that wall in, but like I said, if we're going to consider additional parking, now's the time to do it. to consider additional parking, now's the time to do it when they're in process. No kids are here. So we contacted four different vendors, three of them got back with us with bids. You can see that Vern Bowman is the lowest on the upper and lower lot. Paving Pros did provide a bid for the upper lot only, but that did not include a wall. So that one hundred and nine number is incomplete. It doesn't include the cost of a retaining wall there. So my recommendation would be to go with Vern Bowman for the parking lot.
How soon would this be completed?
As soon as he gets the go ahead, he's going to.
Before school starts?
Our hope is, so right now, that's sitting there in order to compact and he wants as many people to drive on it as, as they can to compact it before the asphalt is put down. This second phase, should you approve it this evening, there will, there will have to be some dirt work, fill, they're going to have to put that wall in beforehand, so there's going to be some, some front loading on the work that needs to be done. And I would anticipate they would want to bring all of the asphalt over and do it all at one time rather than do one component and bring it back another time to do another. So our hope is, and he seems to think that, that it can be done this summer.
How many spots are we getting through all of this?
So I think there's thirteen total for the lot that's on the pictures and then there's additional sixteen for the addition up top.
And how many do you think we're going to leave this for the year?
Minimum twenty. You also have to remember, we are going to continue parking some middle school employees over at the district office to free up some parking space in the middle school lot. This is going to add twenty-nine spots out there. And you know, we've needed parking for substitute teachers and visitors for a long time because that lot is full. So I don't know that this is going to completely solve the problem, but this is going to go a long way to help.
It's going to better.
Yeah. And eventually, when the preschool and early childhood people start going out there, more high school staff and even elementary staff who really committed would like to park in the back because they've always been told to kind of go there because there's the kids needed and other staff.
Yeah, and if you'll remember the conversation from earlier about that sinkhole right there next to that playground?
Right.
Our, our conversation with Mr. Bowman was, can we put a parking lot here? What does that look like? We're in the process of getting some borings done back there to see what that looks like and to see what the possibilities are. We can, should a facility, either wrestling or otherwise, not be able to be placed there, we can put a parking lot there and get significantly more parking back there. Because our property line goes all the way up to that little building at the back of Mr. Cox's property. So that's, that's an option on the table as well, depending on where this athletic facility discussion lands.
And we've also opened up some additional student parking back in the back for faculty just because we knew, I talked to Dr. Taylor at the beginning of the school year, and we knew the impact of what was going to happen out front and we were already planning for that, so we actually blocked off a complete row, so a front and a back for faculty and staff back in the back, student parking lot. Which means we have more kids parking behind the pack, but we did that in order to try to help faculty and staff and try to take some of the pressure off of that front parking lot.
I've also talked to the administration about identifying the appropriate people to be able to, and just assigning some spots for this upcoming year so that it's not a free for all and those who get here the latest have to go here. I would like as many as we can, or you know, even asking for volunteers of, we have these spots available, we need some people to park there this year, do we have any volunteers? And let's assign them that way so that we know going in and we have some idea how to manage what it's going to look like out front.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Vern Bowman for the additional parking at the high school, elementary parking lot as presented.
Second.
Dr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
When we get the elementary done and all this parking, can we look at maybe some?
Trees?
Trees.
Absolutely.
Almost, almost said that earlier.
Well, I'm glad.
Trees are up.
Because I went through this whole thing thinking somebody's going to say trees, because Dr. Taylor knows I'm going to say trees. Nobody said trees.
There used to be big ashtrays out there, but I think.
But they were dying anyway.
There was that.
But I, I was so sad when it was.
All right, thank you, sir. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the school year 2025 budget.
First of all, I want to say that this budget was completed without a life preserver this school year. Last year, Dr. Fleege and I worked on it together, but there's nothing like doing your first budget by yourself. You have to dive in headfirst and figure it out. Many people have contributed to the completion of this budget. Crystal Rock, Megan Donovan, all the administrators, faculty have gotten their budgets to their administrators. So this isn't, my name's on the front of it, but this isn't mine. A lot of people contributed to this and I want to thank all them. They, they met deadlines to get all of their budgets in and have helped me whenever I needed help with, our software program's a bit clunky and it's, when, when you're in it every day, like Crystal and Megan are, it's a little easier to navigate because you remember all the ins and outs, but it's a little more difficult when you're, when you're in it periodically. So I want to thank all them for that. You'll find the budget letter on page three. And that just covers our bases related to the requirements of the budget. Talks about our fiscal objectives for the district. With approval of this budget, you will be approving the enclosed list of additions, reductions, changes and salary schedules detailed on the following pages. And if you have any questions as we go through this, please speak up so we can get those addressed. If you will turn to page five, it would take quite a significant amount of time to go through this thing page by page, so I'm going to try to hit the highlights. Like I said, if you have any questions about anything I'm not discussing, please, please stop me and bring those up. Page five talks about adjustments and additions to the budget. Just to run through these real quick, we received increases in insurance benefits and utility costs. We made adjustments to the budget for transportation expenditures, transitioning from contracted to district operated. We've added one FTE librarian at Bloomsdale Elementary School. We've added one FTE tier two teacher at each elementary school, St. Genevieve Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary. We've added a one FTE tier three teacher at St. Genevieve Elementary School. All of the resources necessary for students' programs and services, that could be anything from classroom supplies to curriculum supplies to manipulatives, that covers a wide variety of things. And the following salary and benefit adjustments. Certified is seven hundred and fifty increase to the base salary, which brings that to forty-three, two fifty. Allow normal movement on the salary schedule, all benefits adjusted based on salary increases. Continue board paid health, dental, vision. Maintain paid life insurance at thirty thousand dollars plus accidental death and dismemberment. Continue the subsidy for the community center membership at eighty dollars. Support staff, allow normal movement on the salary schedule. Fifty cent increase to all base salaries, all benefits adjusted based on the salary increase. Continue board paid health, dental and vision, same life insurance at thirty thousand, continue the subsidy of the community center. Substitute teachers, a five dollar increase to the base substitute pay, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more when we get to the salary schedule. And then a continuation of mileage reimbursement rate of forty-five cents per mile. And number ten is a duplication from that substitute just, just mentioned. Any questions about adjustments or additions? On pages seven through eleven, you will find Missouri finance information, and this is just background information on Missouri school finance, coding, expenditures, function and object codes. Page fifteen, you will find the certified salary schedule, adjusted with that base salary of forty-three, two fifty, and that flows throughout the entire salary schedule. On page seventeen, you will find the support staff's, staff salary schedule with all of the bases increased fifty cents. This brings us to one of the goals Dr. Fleege set a long time ago. If you will remember, the last two years, we increased those base salaries by seventy-five cents for the past two years and this fifty cent increase will take us our base salary over fifteen dollars to fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents, which, which was a goal Dr. Fleege said a long time ago. So I'm, I'm very pleased that we were able to meet that. Pages nineteen and twenty are our extra duty salary schedules. And then page twenty-one is our substitute salary schedule. I think it was mentioned at one of our meetings prior that we needed to consider raising our, our substitute pay. I think we had a couple substitutes who used to drive from Perryville, stay in Perryville because they raised theirs and so the drive didn't make sense to them anymore. And it'd been a while since we raised it, last time was twenty-one, twenty-two. So I thought it was an opportunity to look at this a bit differently. I always looked a bit sideways at the requirement to have ten days in before you received a bump in pay for, for doing a long-term substitute assignment. So what we did was added five dollars to the base. Base substitute salary for substitute who have, substitutes who have a certificate, those who are a certificate, certificated teacher, those who are substituting for a pair of professionals. And so that brings it to a hundred, a hundred and five, ninety-five and one hundred for all of those respectively. If you receive ten, if you have ten years of experience at St. Genevieve, you receive a five dollar additional bonus. We, we removed the ten consecutive day requirement altogether. I thought there was a better approach to that and I'm going to talk about that now. Over the past several years, I have watched our administrators struggle to identify long-term subs for maternity leaves, for whatever reason people are out, medical issues, they're always scrambling and begging and pleading to find long-term subs. And I think a component of that was the way our, our substitute schedule was structured. So rather than say, we need you to do a long-term sub and wait ten days to receive the additional payment for that, if we can get somebody to agree to that long-term sub, you're just going to add ten dollars to their daily pay. If they're going to commit to our students in our district to come in and do a long-term substitute assignment, then we need to commit to them and say, we appreciate you, you coming in and helping us out. So that's that last row there, long-term sub. And those are going to, the administrators always went out to them and, or had secretaries reach out and approve those themselves anyway, so that's not going to change, they're still going to approve those and hopefully that will help our, our efforts in, in filling those long-term sub assignments.
Well, I, I think I'm just understanding, I'm understanding right, but for example, if you're a certificated teacher with ten years' experience at St. Jen and you're doing a long-term sub, then that makes you like a hundred and twenty?
Correct.
As I'm understanding, it accumulates up, okay.
Correct. And then this is going to add to that. Did I print that out? Bring it with me.
After twenty-five days, after fifty days, you're saying?
Yeah, correct. I did an analysis this past year of all of our substitute teachers and I put it in an Excel sheet. Our substitute teacher that was higher than everybody was a hundred and fifty-five days out of a hundred and sixty-nine school days. That's impressive and I feel like that person is dedicated. We've got a hundred and fifty-one, a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and ten. So I was trying to get inventive and think about different ways and so I came up with the benchmarks that you see down below. Once a substitute teacher comes to our district and has, hits the twenty-five day mark, I don't care what building, I don't care if you've subbed one in each building, five in each, it makes me no difference. If you've subbed in our district twenty-five times, five dollars gets added on that twenty-fifth day. When you reach the fifty mark, another five dollars for a total of ten. So Mrs. Diesel, you were just talking about that example of a hundred and twenty, this gets added to that then as well. Once you get to seventy-five days, then additional five for a total of fifteen. And so we would have had ten people over the seventy-five mark, seventy-five day mark. We would have had eighteen people over the fifty mark and twenty-nine people over the twenty-five mark. There were thirty-five people between fifteen and twenty and there were forty-one people fifteen or less. My hope is that when you have a choice to go to Perryville or to come to St. Jen, you will remember as a substitute teacher that if I get twenty-five days at St. Jen, I get five dollars more. If I get my fifty mark at St. Jen, I get ten dollars more every time. So this provides a little incentive for substitute teachers to come to us. So I also did an analysis of what this will cost the district and I applied it to the substitutes that worked last year. That total would be twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars in addition to what, we paid a total of twenty, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars roughly. So it would add a little over twenty thousand dollars. I feel like that's money well spent. We, I listened to our administrators talk about how difficult it is to get subs, I listened to them talk about how they have to rearrange classes, combine classes, have teachers on their planned period working. I feel like that twenty thousand dollars is well spent if we can provide teachers more time in their classrooms to plan, if we can provide administrators less time to have to scramble and combine classes or go sub themselves in classrooms because we don't have anybody because we have, you know, teachers out on a field trip and there are no subs left. Or we've got training in, in one grade level in the elementary and we've got seven subs in to sub for, for one grade level or another. So I'm, I'm, I think you can tell, I'm kind of excited about this structure. I worked, worked quite a while on it before I landed here and looked at several different options, but I feel like that, that provides some incentive to come to St. Jen.
One question. Does it make any difference to me that you, what you have it worded, is this greater than twenty-five days and that?
Right.
Not twenty-five or more?
Greater than or equal to?
So on.
Yes.
So on the twenty-fifth day, they're getting five bucks extra?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was, I was the same way because I, I run into the same thing with ten years' experience at St. Jen, well, that's really on the first day of your eleventh. Is when you receive that, that next stipend. So I'll, I'll fix that in there as well.
Looks really good, I appreciate that. And that's not consecutive days, that's just throughout the year.
No, not consecutive.
Once you hit that threshold.
Yes, we took all the consecutive stuff off of that.
This may be a silly question that I could figure the math up on, but the individual who worked a hundred and fifty-five days in the new schedule here, would it make more sense for us just to employ them than it would be to actually pay them?
Somebody brought that up, I didn't give them that. Yes, that's something we need to look at as well.
Right. I just, I, this is, I, there are probably tears, she's like, what? I'm just going to retire and sub. Not really, but.
You gotta watch it. A lot less responsibility, so.
Yeah, so.
It's a great, it's really rewarding for stuff.
Any other questions about that? On pages twenty-three through thirty-three, you will see one of the requirements of the budget and that is our three-year revenue comparison. And I'm going to talk about, when we get down to the, the budget revenue page, I'm going to talk about those individual numbers, so I don't want you to think we have to look through that. On pages thirty-five through one oh eight, you will see a three-year comparison for expenses. And then on page one oh nine, I have a summary of all of that. Give you a second to get there. So I pulled all the information from the totals from the revenue and expenditures for our budget and I, I put them on this page as a summary. So you can see revenues for fund one through fund four and the total on the far right and then expenditures, fund one through fund four and then the total on the far right. And you can see there's a significant increase in expenditures and please remember that from fund four, we are going to be spending a significant amount of money from Prop SG out of fund four, so that's why that might look a little lopsided. What I want to highlight is the projected balances down at the bottom. That's not total balances, that's balances based on revenues and expenditure estimates for this school year, for the fiscal year, twenty-five year. And that projected balance for fund one is one point eight eight million dollars deficit. And that projected balance for Fund One is one point eight-eight million dollars deficit. Last year, to give you a reference for where we were, we were at five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars deficit. I want to remind you that revenues are very conservative and expenditures are very aggressive. So my hope is it will not be that impactful, but I did want to highlight the challenges associated with taking on a transportation company. We are going to have significant increases in salary. We are going to have some impacts and benefits as well. And I didn't want to sugarcoat it and try to hide deficit spending in any way, shape, or form. I wanted to be transparent with where we were with the budget. This past year, we had a thirty-six point six fund balance in our operating budget. This is going to impact that if it comes down, and this, over a long period of time, would not be sustainable. Like I said, my hope is that the impact, when we do a budget revision, Mrs. Roth and I were talking sometime in October. Keep in mind also that these numbers are based on insufficient data from fiscal year twenty-four. I have no information from June. I had to estimate all of the ending balances from June for this year, because I don't know them yet, as well as the expenditures. So I did my best to go in and make those estimates based on prior years and averages, but where I landed was about one point eight-eight million dollars deficit spending for the coming school year.
Can you help me arrive at that number? I'm seeing one point.
So you see the eight point nine in the totals for revenues minus expenditures in Fund One?
Page one oh nine?
Yes.
You have filled a page.
You want a new book?
No, it's fine.
Maybe that's why we're having adding problems, that's why we're.
It's wrong on the computer, too.
It's on the problem screen, too.
Yeah.
Would you like a book?
Is it on the screen?
I just see it for now.
This is correct.
Okay.
I kept looking for that one.
Yeah, I was like, wait.
I'm like, I got it right here.
Oh, this is an old one, too.
No, it's got an update in the page, the page is.
Okay, got it, we're good. All right.
Okay, and it's that.
Okay, so we're deficit spending one point eight, and in reserves we have, we're estimating at the end of the year, eight point nine. Is that right?
We're going to get to what are fund balances. On the next summary sheet, we're going to add fund balances to this.
This doesn't include.
This does not include fund balances.
Revenue and expenses for one year.
For the fiscal year twenty-five, yes.
If we had zero dollar balance, it would be negative one point eight.
Correct.
In Fund One.
In Fund One.
Fund One, yep.
Any other questions about page one oh nine? And then page one-ten is our debt service. That comes directly from LJ Hart. Those are hard numbers, we know what we're going to have to pay out of debt service. To highlight some of the revenues, on page one-eleven, fifty-one-eleven, current taxes. We anticipate a revenue of seventeen point seven million dollars. Right below that, fifty-one-twelve, delinquent taxes, we're estimating three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Right below that, Proposition C, fifty-one-thirteen, we're estimating two point three million dollars.
Was there anything that, wasn't he talking about Prop C with seven twenty-seven? I don't use the word stealing lightly, but stealing it out of Prop C and helping fund seven twenty-seven?
Perhaps.
Across the state, so it's kind of scary.
Is the whole thing scary?
Fifty-one forty-one, earnings from temporary investments. We still have a significant amount of bond money invested, and we're drawing that down as needed. We're anticipating about a one point one million investment earning on that until we're able to spend it this next fiscal year. Fifty-three eleven on page one-twenty.
Sorry, Paul, before you move on for that.
Yes, sir.
The bond, the earnings, we estimated one million anyway when we originally invested it, correct? But that was just the premium, wasn't it?
So the premium was about eight hundred thousand dollars, and then I think we're at two point three currently, including the premium.
Oh, is that more than what we originally thought?
Yes.
I thought so.
Yes.
That's why we can swing the athletic facility.
Yes, absolutely. And Jason Hoffman worked with Colin at Brock Miller to come up with draw schedules and has really kept our eye on the ball with suggesting investments. And he's with Mo Cat, and we've been working exclusively with them, and they've done a great job staying in touch with us and making suggestions on how to make the most out of those investments, so.
Figure what interest rates right now for the side of it.
Okay, fifty-one, fifty-three eleven, state monies from the basic formula, we're estimating three point six million. State transportation, fifty-three twelve, we're estimating a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue. I do want to mention, those two figures may be impacted as we move forward because of Senate Bill seven twenty-seven. Seven twenty-seven has a significant fiscal note associated with it. I've heard estimates anywhere from five hundred and fifty million to seven hundred-plus million, depending on where everything lands. Now, all of this will not hit us in the fiscal year twenty-five, but it's coming. And if legislators fail to appropriate the money that they say they're going to appropriate, the first two places they're going to pull it from are transportation and the basic formula. So we're going to keep a close eye on that and keep our fingers crossed. But like I said, you never know what's going to happen in the state legislature, and we need to pay attention and be vigilant regarding conversations that are going on in Jefferson City, as well as bills that are being introduced. Page one-twenty, fifty-three twelve, oh, I talked about state transportation, and then fifty-three nineteen, classroom trust fund, seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Our overall projection, which is listed at the end, page one-twenty-five, is thirty-two million, two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. So then that takes us to expenses. On page one thirty, eleven eleven, both elementary schools, Bloomsdale Elementary and St. Genevieve Elementary, we have a budget number of five million dollars in expenditures. Middle school on the next page is two point two million. High school on the following page is three point, almost three million?
Paul, can I even remember?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not really remembering. So is Bloomsdale's budget or expenses, it's such a smaller building, how are they equal to St. Genevieve?
They're combined, not equal.
I'm sorry, so you're saying combined?
Yes.
Like, that seems awful high. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But your even salary, Bloomsdale alone is a five million bucks less.
Yeah, I like that. That's not making sense to me. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Page one forty-one, special education, and special education takes up several pages. Page one forty-one has their total of one point nine million. Page one fifty-five, fourteen twenty-one, athletics, six hundred and seventy thousand. Right below that is contracted vocational, that's the cost to send our kids to Perryville, that's a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Have one or two routes this year.
Two routes this year, and I think we're going to maintain two routes next year. We're going to have enough enrollment to do that. Twenty-two thirteen, staff training, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. This is up significantly. You also have to remember, we're continuing the science of reading training, we've received the CBE grant, we've got significant training, and administrators have already attended a session with Dr. Westfall regarding competency-based learning and how that's going to impact us. So we're going to, training is going to increase quite a bit, which is why this number is up significantly from last year. Page one seventy-nine, Board of Education, is just under five hundred thousand dollars. That includes eighteen thousand dollars for the audit, fourteen thousand dollars for a potential board election if needed, and then four hundred thousand dollars for legal services. I hope we don't get anywhere close to that number. On page one eighty-seven, contracted pupil transportation, that is the contracted amount that we had in year three of our Faller contract. Crystal, Roth, and I are working through what coding is going to look like for our district moving forward, because we are going to have to move these funds from contracted services out to district operated services. So those numbers are going, those accounting numbers are going to change, and we're currently working through what that's going to look like. My hope is we can snag another school district's budget for ASBR and compare apples to apples, one that's running their own transportation division. Page one ninety-seven. This is Prop SG updates, and we've got fifteen million dollars in there for that. Debt service, two point five million, fifty-one-eleven. Fifty-two eleven, interest paid on bonds, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And then that takes us to our overall projection of forty million, two hundred and seven thousand dollars, on page one ninety-eight. And then Mr. Gettiger, I think this is what you were referring to.
Lease purchase, since he wrote, budgets, is that just because?
It wasn't approved, yeah, right. That'll be in the October update.
Okay, and then you mentioned forty million?
We've got forty million.
I think that's counting.
That may be a typo on my part. Yeah, forty-nine, one seventy-seven, sorry about that.
Total expenses. Go ahead.
On the following page, page one ninety-nine, you will see estimates for fiscal year twenty-five, data combined with prior year ending fund balances. So this takes into account ending year, now estimates, of course, because we don't have June, ending year fund balances, what our revenues are, adding that number, what our expenses are, taking that number away. And then that leaves us down at the bottom with ending fund balances, and you can see Fund One, which we're estimating ending this year at eleven point eight million. We're estimating ending fiscal year twenty-five at nine point nine million. So that's where that one point eight-eight million deficit spending comes in. I did want to highlight, in the middle of that page, where it says theoretical tax yield, so basically what we do is we take our tax levy, we multiply it by the assessed valuation, and we get a number. If we collected a hundred percent of our taxes, that's what we would get. We then have to take that number, and normally, in a normal situation, we would estimate anywhere from ninety-two percent collection rate to a ninety-four percent collection rate, based on historical data. And that's what we used to do in this district. I can go back and look at some of Mr. Stewart's calculations where he was adjusting, "Okay, I think this year it might be a ninety-three, it looks a little better." You know, "Okay, we're going to drop it to a ninety-two to be safe." Our circumstance has a significant amount of that in protest. So Dr. Fleeck started with a sixty-four percent collection rate several years ago. I think she kept that for two years, we dropped to sixty-three, and I think that's where we are here. So instead of a normal situation where we're estimating a ninety-two, ninety-three percent collection rate, we're down to a sixty-three percent collection rate in order to protect ourselves and understand that those protested taxes are not coming to us, they are going to escrow. So that's a significant difference from a normal school district. So estimate of uncollectible taxes is roughly ten point nine million dollars. I also wanted to highlight Fund Four, that seventeen point five million dollars. All that money is not sitting in Fund Four. That seventeen point five million includes the money that's invested in Mo Cat in order to capitalize on investment opportunities there. But I did feel like it was important to include, because anytime we need to draw it down, it goes directly into Fund Four to pay bills. The following pages contain some historical information related to debt service tax rate, historical tax rates, and then surrounding districts' tax rates. I know that was a lot of information. I've spent a lot of time in here, looking at the numbers and trying to make estimates and best guesses. It's a little, when you think about business professionals making budgets, attempting to make a budget without knowing your final number in June is difficult. And like I said before, this is my first year without a life preserver here to help me, and it was an exercise in, we really do have to estimate. Like, we don't know our June numbers. We don't know what numbers we're going to report to DESI for our ASBR. So that makes it a little more difficult, and that's why we come back. Our hope is to come back in October with a budget update. I know we waited a bit longer last year until February, but I feel like having those final numbers in June will allow us to bring an updated budget, a revised budget in October, November sometime. Keep in mind that that last page that we looked at, that tax rate, is current year tax rate. Our new tax rate for the upcoming year won't be calculated until August. And I did want to point out, in consent agenda items, there was a date move for our August board meeting to August twenty-seventh, that it will not be the third Tuesday of that month, it will be the following Tuesday, in order to give the collector more time to get us the information that we need and give us more time to be able to calculate tax rate and have the tax rate hearing as well.
Okay, so I'm going to beat a dead horse. So on the page one ninety-nine, where you have calculated the current tax revenue estimate of seventeen point seven million, I understand there are assessor fees and other items that would factor into this, but if you add back the portion that is uncollectible currently because it's being contested, that would add another, again, we wouldn't collect all of this, but another ten point nine million to that number. You're telling us that we're spending, we just spent one point two-two-five million dollars tonight, taking on transportation, which I'm glad we're taking it on, but it's going to be a challenge, and you're estimating a five or six hundred thousand dollar deficit. So that could all be paid for, were those taxes not challenged, and then that three dollars and forty point five cent tax rate for a hundred dollars of assessed value could also be lowered on all of our citizens while also paying off all that debt.
Correct.
Just clarifying.
Do you know how much is in escrow currently?
Bailey and I have been working with them to determine exact amounts. There's been some confusion in the past regarding the amount in escrow and then the amount of St. Genevieve's portion in escrow. I've been working with Linda, to be honest with you, transportation has taken over my life, and I put everything else on hold. But we plan to revisit that, because I would like some hard numbers for the past three years on what the taxes were, what's been distributed to the taxing entities, what portion is left for that particular year that's earmarked for St. Genevieve. And I want that for each year, so that we have hard numbers on what we're looking at, because, you know, we can do these estimates all day long, but I called Linda to get this conversation started, and I said, "I want to know what portion is ours, what's been distributed, is there a possibility that, worst-case scenario, we've got some money left in there that hasn't been distributed, and worst-case scenario, it doesn't come out in our favor, we wouldn't have to pay it back." And so she did a little digging, and she said that the money has been distributed. And so she did a little digging, and she said that the money has been distributed based on a worst-case scenario. So should the protesting entities win, the money in escrow goes to them and none will be distributed to us. That's the way it was asked by the protesting entities for them to distribute it. So it's already been distributed on a worst-case scenario framework. So that led me to, well then I need to know what's left in there, because I think it's important that the public knows, I think it's important that we talk about that every month, because taxpayers should know how much money is being in there, and especially taxpayers who pay their taxes, and... Yes?
Without protest.
So that's a work in progress, we hope to revisit that with Linda and Mrs. Otto. Do you remember Lisa? Lisa. But I think they were, it was tax, tax season, they were a bit overwhelmed there too, when this was going on. So we were in their ear kind of at the wrong time.
Do we know, and maybe I need to ask other parties, but are we, as a county, not as a district, but as a county, are we earning interest off those escrow dollars? And if we are, are we, if we were to win, how's that going to be split?
Who gets it? Great question. So it initially came up, should the district draw down some of that money and invest it, given the fact that we're investing our bond issue money and doing...
Well...
Okay. That came up. If, if we do that and we lose, not only does the principal go back to whoever wins, the interest would as well. So there would be no gain in that. The interest that it's currently earning, sitting there, will go to whoever the tax commission comes down on, or whoever wins the legal battle.
So that has been clarified?
Yes.
It's best to leave it where it's at, in escrow.
Unless you can earn a better rate than what they could.
It still goes, even if you do.
Well, I know what I'm saying.
But if we would win.
If we would win?
That's what I'm saying, if we win.
Yes.
It's a large chunk of money.
Yes. I'm, I'm confident in saying it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 14 or 15 million.
This year.
I think that's total.
No, I mean, that's where it's at.
This year, until the next protest.
We'll continue to climb, because they'll continue to protest until there's resolution.
Yeah.
And then what, where are we at on the timetable with that protest? What's, is it this fall or something, there was a hearing, or?
I believe it's February now.
Oh, February?
Got delayed again.
That's the state tax commission officer's decision.
February of '25.
Yes, sir.
And then, should they make a decision in February of '25, it would go to the state tax commission, and they would have to schedule a hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're not close.
Did I answer your question?
Not what I wanted to hear, but yeah.
I know, I know.
Any other questions on the '24-'25 budget? Thank you for that detailed explanation.
You're welcome.
We need a motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Say slowly, because it's not written in here.
It is, if you scroll down.
Oh, it's in the industry.
Keep going now. Oh, sorry.
She has a different screen.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And you're, oh, like open up the content? Oh, she's going to reveal that?
Can you update that page?
She, like she's...
Can you up that, up that page in our, because that one is not in our...
The final is the old final, not the new one.
I don't know, I started to do that this afternoon.
No.
I will, yes.
Motion to approve the following budget items for the 2024-2025 school year. Adopt a new budget for the 2024-25 school year. Increase hourly pay rates by 50 cents and allow regular step movement to the support staff salary schedule. Increase the base teacher salary $750, allow regular steps and lane movements, and allow additional degree stipends to be applied for certified staff. And increase the substitute pay rate by $5 per day.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda are the audit engagement letters.
B-Sync, Hay, Row, and Stroder sent us the audit engagement letter. They do this annually, and we sign it and give it back to them, so I would recommend you approve the engagement letters for B-Sync, Hay, Row, and Stroder.
This is not the, we have a contract, right, with Emery?
We do, yeah.
This is just to get started, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the engagement letters from B-Sync, Hay, Row, and Stroder to audit the financial statements of the St. Jude County R2 school district for the year ending on June 30th, 2024.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the bus driver's salary schedule.
I thought it was appropriate to pull this out of the main book and talk about, since it's new, like I said, some representatives from, the bus drivers came in and talked to us about their challenges and their struggles, and we kind of shared where we were with our budget, and I think, you know, talking now about a $1.8 million deficit spend this upcoming year highlights some of our challenges with the budget. That being said, bus drivers are important employees, and we need to do what we can to attract them. If you look around at any community, not only in Missouri, but in any state, you will see signs saying "Bus Drivers Wanted." And you can talk to any superintendent. The salary has to be attractive for the work that's there. They're committed professionals, it takes a village to raise the students and to provide the students with what they need, whether it's bus drivers, cooks, paraprofessionals, custodians, teachers, any staff, it takes all of us to make it happen. That starts with bus drivers getting the kids here in the morning. I don't want, I don't want to have to run double routes or to adjust start times or any of, any of that stuff that some districts are having to do because they don't have enough bus drivers. So we revisited some of the items that we originally covered in our first meeting, and here's where we landed with the salary schedule. It's a step zero of starting out at $18 an hour. And then current FALR employees will be placed on that salary schedule. We weren't able to do it by looking at years of experience, because it was greatly inequitable. I didn't want some people getting a $6 raise and some people getting a 20 cent raise, and that's what it would have been. So we had to ignore years of experience while still trying to honor that. Place them on the salary schedule in a manner that gave them a raise associated with where their years of experience were. So we were able to do that. The lowest raise is going to be $1.20. The highest raise is somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.50, $1.52 for those employees that have been there 25 years or more. That being said, it's not equal. There's no way to transition people over to this salary schedule and make everybody get this amount of a raise. It's just the way our salary schedules are built. So this first year, there's going to be some small differences in those raises, but I did want to talk about that. In addition to, they're currently receiving three days of leave, we're upping that to four. The AMI days, we're providing them with five AMI days, so that when, when we do have to take an AMI day, they don't lose pay. They can use one of those days, and then any days they have left over, they get paid for at the end of the year. They get paid out at the end of the year. They won't roll over. So with that being said, I would ask that you approve the bus driver's salary schedule. I did speak to those representatives that came and had a meeting with me and kind of walked through all of, all of the things that we talked about during that meeting, spelled all of this out for them. We're still going to have to sit down one-on-one with each, with each bus driver and have those individual meetings, so that those, those specific questions regarding their circumstance can be asked and answered, and we can get them concrete answers for their particular situation, because it's hard to do that in a group setting with everybody, because everybody has a particular situation, and, and, well, what about me? Well, let's sit down and talk about you. This is your time, let's talk about it, and we plan to begin scheduling those meetings with Chrissy and Megan, but it starts, it starts with the salary schedule.
Taylor, can you talk about the benefits, if they're working more than 30 hours a week, I believe, is that...
Sure. Yeah, retirement will kick in if, if they consistently work more than 20 hours a week.
20, okay.
And that's a 6.86 contribution from them into peers, and that's a match from us. We will match the 6.86%. If they consistently work 30 or more hours per week, the district would then pay their insurance, and that's a $513 benefit for health insurance alone, that doesn't mention dental or vision or life either, which they would qualify for, so...
Okay. And this is a base salary of 18, but all the existing drivers will get at least a $1.20 raise?
They will be placed individually on the salary schedule, so that they get a minimum of $1.20.
And then the trip rate remains 16?
$16 per hour.
And this starts at next, beginning of next year?
Correct.
And the way to get to 30 hours or more is to take on extra?
So the way that it's worded and the investigation that Megan has done is consistent. Since we've never been down this path before, do trips count as consistent?
Right.
So we are going to, some districts just provide insurance. They don't ask any questions, they don't have any hourly rules. There are some hoops you have to jump through on Megan's end if we do it that way, and so we may, regardless of the consistency component of it, since we have that latitude, we may just say, you know, over, over the 16 weeks that you worked, if that average is out to be 30 hours, you know, some more, some less, you can qualify. I think those are specific situations that we're going to have to work through this, this first year. And hopefully, the transportation director that we hire will be able to provide some insight on that as well.
So I know, like, the drivers historically in the past, they, they were able to, in the summertime when they weren't working, was able to collect unemployment, to supplement income, you know, so they probably did pretty well. So just explain, that's not, you can't do that anymore because of why?
So I reached out to our legal team, and, just so I make sure I'm talking about it correctly, I brought it with me. School districts are different, number one. We have scheduled breaks. Those aren't a surprise. Our, our schedule for next year has been made ahead of time, and those are breaks that are anticipated. There is a reasonable expectation of employment for the next school year for bus drivers, so that's one of the components that you have to meet, and so because of those reasons, they wouldn't qualify for unemployment. And I think it's the reasonable expectation of employment after the scheduled break is the key component there. So that's one of the things that we talked significantly about in that meeting, was from a bus driver's perspective, that's money that's out of their pocket. And so that, that had us reevaluate this, and is it more important to raise the trip rate, or is it more important to put money on the base? Well, the conversation led us to, it was more important to put money on the base, to see if we could provide that, that money in the pocket of, of our bus drivers. So that reasonable expectation of employment is the key component.
And that same rule, I'm sure applies to cooks and students. I guess anybody who's not here in the summer, so...
So is it because public schools are a public entity versus a private company or corporation, or what?
That's exactly what it is. Public schools are different than a, than a private corporation, and FALR made the choice to do that as a private corporation. They didn't fight it, they just, they paid the bill, their unemployment bill. School districts having calendars made well in advance, and those scheduled breaks well in advance, with the understanding that we're going to start school in August of next year, and we're going to need you, puts that in a different perspective regarding the law.
So the 20s, that's not counting, that's 20 hours, yeah, 20 hours, that's not counting the extra hour.
You're talking about the three versus four minimum?
Yeah, yeah.
So they currently have a three-hour minimum per day, along with the base rate increase of 18, and the minimum raise of 120. We wanted to meet them halfway, and tell them that we were listening, we did hear them, and we understand what they're going through, and, and we thought, you know what, this is a good gesture. We don't want them to be afraid that we're going to come in and adjust routes and take this or take that, but that's not, that's not what we want. We want them to say, you know what, they're trying. They tried, they tried to do some things here, they didn't just say, no, this is how we're doing it. We wanted them to, number one, feel heard, and, and number two, feel like we were making an effort to respond to what they were, were telling us, and so that's why we made the choice to change that three-hour minimum to a four-hour minimum as well.
Dr. Taylor, I know you talked with superintendents in other districts who, who they manage their own transportation, is, are there similar proposals, or where are we at, where are we at in this spectrum?
So we're unique in that we're the only public school district in St. Genevieve County. You can go south to Perryville, and they even have Altenburg, which is another public school district. So they're a bit of a unicorn as well, but if you go north, there are school districts competing with one another all over the place. If you go over to Farmington and Park, I mean, they're, they're almost on top of one another. So yes, we looked at their, all kinds of different structures and all kinds of different incentives, and they all do it different, based on where they are. Some of them just throw money on the base and say, we're not doing benefits. Some of them say, well, if you want health insurance, we'll give you health insurance, if not, we'll do this on the base. I mean, there are all kinds of incentives. Our problem was, that I can do all that research, and I can come in and make a decision before we hire a director, and then I can have a director who hopefully has some experience come in and say, what were you thinking? And I did not want that to happen, so I tried to make accommodations and to do everything I thought was reasonable, and with the understanding that, that we want them to stay, that they are valuable to us, and, and we did listen. With, on the backside, a director being able to come in and say, okay, good, I'm glad you didn't do this, because that would have put us in a pickle. I want the director to bring some expertise to the table and, and sit there and say, okay, here's how, and learn how we're doing it, spend some time learning how we're doing it, figure out why we're doing it, and then, you know, six, eight, a year from now, six, eight months or a year from now, make some recommendations to us on, here's how we did last year, and, and these are some things I'd like to change to make some improvements for the upcoming year. That's our hope.
What's the, so, okay, so salary, they, 18 an hour, what's a trip rate? She's the one who has to explain that.
So if you drive a morning and afternoon route, that's, let's just pick a three hours total, hour and a half in the morning, hour and a half in the afternoon, you get paid, let's say you're making $20, you're on step 10, you're making $20.14 an hour, you get paid $20.14 for those three hours.
Really four hours?
Really four, thank you.
The four.
Yes. So it's a minimum of four, we're going to add an hour to it.
Right.
So now, you, you do a field trip during the day. You, you take a basketball team in the evening.
Okay, that's the trip.
That's the 16.
That's our athletics. You run, you, you take a basketball team to Arcadia Valley, then you have to sit there and watch a game, and then drop, you're getting paid $60 an hour, you, you pay $60 an hour to sit there and watch a game, too.
You want to drive fast?
We can get you a license.
You would have some interest.
I've always said I think, wow.
So what I'm hearing, the expectation with the director is not to come in and flip everything upside down, it's, we're going to evaluate and see how things are going, give it some time, and we're going to not... Give it some time and we're going to not necessarily even flip anything, but we're going to let you see what's working, what's not working and...
Yeah. That was, that was my conversation with the bus drivers, was coming in and learning it first. Before, not just coming in and thinking you know everything, coming in, learning how, how it's done, why it's done. Putting some, some ideas in their head, maybe putting some things down on paper for, here are some goals we might want to look at for the next school year. And that's going to be my conversation with them.
Okay. And I heard concerns from them about, uh, biweekly pay. Can you talk about?
Yeah, so biweekly pay hasn't been an option for any of our employees since we transitioned. Uh, we attempted to do it, uh, for, for hourly employees and it just became a nightmare. One person does payroll and that's Megan. We would, we would probably have to hire another in order to do a biweekly payroll uh, because it's just overwhelming collecting time cards from the number of, of people that we have employed here. So the monthly pay keeps everybody on the same, it, it, time sheets are collected once a month, the same time each month. You can get on a schedule, everybody's familiar with the schedule. Um, we did alter our processes a little bit and instead of annualizing for twelve months like we do for all of our current employees, giving them a ten, ten-month option as well. Um, Megan stepped up to the plate and said, I, I hear, I hear what they're saying and, and the ten-month option might be an, an option for us. And then she went back and did some research and said, yeah, I think we can do that if that's... And that's going to be an individual choice for each of them. They can choose to annualize over twelve or they can choose to annualize over ten. And Megan's going to have that list and know what they're doing and, and being able to track that.
And so the logistics of that is if they're working, you know, the minimum four-hour, hourights or four-hour, just call it route, the twelve months not considering if they take a trip, correct? Like it's just going to be?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be, so you'd get, get their list of trips at the sixteen-dollar rate. This is what they worked and then they would be paid the fifteenth of the next month for that.
Okay.
And how do they put their name in for the trip?
Martha poking a hornet's nest here. I, there's something about a desk and a refrigerator and some timeframes.
So they can choose to, to get checks over the summer if they wanted to spread it out over twelve months or continue to take ten months.
Correct.
Are there tax implications to being paid once a month versus?
The ending amount is going to be the same.
Okay.
So...
It doesn't matter when they take the taxes.
Taxes, okay, good.
Will they still be allowed to take buses home as they're doing now?
So our plan is to, everyone who's, I mean, it makes sense. It's going to save wear and tear on the buses, it's going to save wear and tear on our drivers from having to drive in every night. So the plan is to continue to do that. Um, we may have to look at purchasing a vehicle or two, um, in order to minimize costs associated with diesel fuel and wear and tear on vehicles. When we look at people who may be coming all the way to town from, from way out in Bloomsdale, coming all the way to town to drop kids off and then parking the bus at the bus barn or, and getting in a vehicle and going home, or taking that bus back home for the day and then coming back to town. Uh, it seems, the more people I talk to, the more people, it seems to make sense that, that a vehicle is there, uh, to provide that benefit, uh, for those drivers. Because it's, you know, the more you, and these are things you don't think about unless you run a, a transportation division, you know? Um, and, and I hadn't thought about it before then, but, yeah, what's she supposed to do all day? She's supposed to bring her car in town and park it at the bus barn and have somebody take her back home so she can jump in the bus or the car's available and then she doesn't have a car at home? There is a lot to think about. So our plan, to answer your question, is to allow them to do what they're currently doing. Um, I, I think our, our, our new transportation director will have a, a plan to ride routes with them. Um, not only to get to know our community, but to get to know the, the ins and outs of each route, uh, the ins and outs of our roads, uh, spend a little time with our bus drivers and get to know them, spend a little time with our kids and get to know them. Um, so I, I think that's a good plan, starting now.
I mean, I, this is a funny question, but are there substitute bus drivers?
There are.
Okay, because if a bus driver's sick or whatever, okay.
Several of them on the list that Fowler gave us are listed as subs. So they don't have regular routes, um, but they're listed as sub there.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
So several, the list you provided us that came from Fowler, I imagine, shows no names but pay rates, hours per day, years of experience. So there's quite a few there that are listed at sixteen seventy-five, seventeen, seventeen oh five. Everyone will at least go to eighteen if not farther.
Correct.
And all those hours per day that say three point five, three point five, three point two five, three point six eight, everyone will get a four-hour day.
Correct.
You have to talk to each individual driver within, before school starts.
Yeah. Yeah. We do have some paperwork that would, you know, we're taking them on as employees. We have to get their correct information down for payroll reasons and for reporting reasons. And we want to have them in our system, be able to email them and text them. Cause I, I don't know how they did it before with, I don't know if Mary Ellen called everybody and said, snow day? If they were on our call system or relied on Buck to call them or how they did that. On the email, on the text?
Our call system.
Oh, okay.
Didn't, I know him.
Talking about snow days?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah.
So you're just, like, cooks, custodians, they also have like fifteen thirty-one?
Fifteen thirty-one? We would, so if you'll remember last year, we put a hundred-dollar sign-on incentive in place for any current St. Jen employee who is interested in being a bus driver. We told everybody that...
Five hundred, five hundred.
Was it five hundred? I'm sorry, it was five hundred. Thank you. Um, and, and we, we said, we would love to talk to you about how we can help you with, if you're a para and you're interested in doing this, we will help you with your schedule. Uh, if that means you're getting to, to school a couple minutes late, we will, we will accommodate, we will work around it. Uh, we had one cook come on and, and sign on to be a bus driver and help us out. So, uh, that opportunity was there, that opportunity is still there. We would love to continue those conversations about what can, can you drive an hour and a half route in the morning and the afternoon? You know?
Folks, do you, do you have any other questions? Terry, I was just going to ask you, do you, I mean, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Glad you're here. I think the board is very, very interested in making sure we are, or the board and Dr. Taylor, obviously. Dr. Taylor put a lot of effort into this and putting our best foot forward. I think he said it, uh, very responsibly earlier, it takes a team. So we need you guys, you're a big part of the team. I appreciate all you do.
That made him smile bigger than me.
I'll, motion to approve the bus driver's salary schedule is presented.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, any personnel changes approved during closed session earlier this evening, if you find it, will be provided in the draft meeting minutes within seventy-two hours of adjournment.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn completely. A motion to adjourn the open session of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of St. Genevieve School District.
Start it. I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.